All right, good evening. I'd like to call for order. The February 5th, 2019, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board. Morgan, would you like to start us off with a roll call?
Raymond Lake.
Here.
Sunny Louzo.
Here.
Heron Beatty. Don Black.
Here.
Willie Newkirk Senior.
Here.
Carol Williams. Pat Dory.
Here.
Jeffrey Midgett.
Here.
Jerry Walker.
Here.
Marshall Ballard.
Here.
We have four of them.
Excellent, thank you so much. Uh, we don't have any minutes, so we'll move on past that item and we'll move on to old business. My first item of old business is consideration of a request to rezone approximately 2.4 acres from R-20 Residential District to C-3 Commercial District. It's by Moffitt Enterprises LLC and John Thomas Engineering, located at 4526 US Highway 17. Uh, the property is further identified in Craigway County Parcel Identification Numbers or number 8206079, and it is in the ETJ. Morgan, would you like to give us staff review of that item?
Yes, so at our last meeting, the board requested staff investigate the claim that Rocker Run residents were promised upon annexation and initials already that no commercial used to be permitted in the area. Staff researched the matter and found no evidence of the claim per the attachment. It's from the Board of Alderman meeting that was dated May 25th at 9:99, and I also attached the petition from the community requesting annexation and zoning, which is attached, "In addition, contractual zoning is not a legal practice." Uh, all public notice requirements have been fulfilled as we know this was continued from our last meeting. So, staff advised of the Planning and Zoning Board to recommend approval of rezoning request to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, um, Hiren, do you want to request recusal on this one if I recall from last time? Okay. So, Hiren is requesting recusal. We need a motion and a second for that to accept his request.
I would like to introduce a motion that Hiren recuses himself.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're refused. We'll bring you back in after this one. Please join the audience.
Do we have any other conflicts of interest on this one?
I, I don't think so. Any other conflicts of interest that we need to deal with with recusal? All right, doesn't sound like it. So you all will recall from the, uh, our last meeting, um, this particular, uh, application. Is there any board discussion before I open this for public comment?
Yes, I would like to discuss this. First, I want to thank the planning department for finding the information they did. It was really a needle in the haystack. I went to the library, to the Sun Journal, and the Sun Journal sent me to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill to see if there were any index records from the newspapers. There, there are none from that time. And there were two target dates. One was 1994 and the other was 1999. And, and, uh, Morgan and her staff and one had to really thoroughly dig through all that information. Now, we do know that the area that's being rezoned from residential to commercial proposal was originally a railroad track right away. And that means it never was historically a residential area until this thing happened. We also know that the city of New Bern really didn't encroach on, on the Rocky Run area that much. That all commercial development was basically frontage on Route 17. Nothing was ever proposed rezoning properties from the Rocky Run area. So, the, the city has acted in good faith. One of the things I think we have to consider though is the Heron family has a, has a homestead there established for generations. And I am not from this area. I know at least two members of this board are from the New York, including myself, at least three members of this board are from the New York City metropolitan area. And I think we should be considerate when, um, when, when old established families in New Bern raise some concerns for us, and I don't think we should rule them lightly. I think that should all become a consideration for us. The director of the planning department we know is from New Hampshire. One of our planners, Brad Skirby, was from Massachusetts. So I just think we have to be a little bit considerate when we go forward on some of this planning and consider what the whole community views are. Then, I think we also have to consider how important it is that 17 in that area is off gateway from the south into New Bern and how that appears too as well. And I think these all should all take consideration at this point. That's my piece. And I also want to thank everybody for giving more time to review the matter.
Sure.
I very much appreciate that, and I think the research that was done was very helpful.
It's our obligation. Thank you, Don. Any other discussion from the board? Okay.
I'd like to comment.
Certainly.
Uh, pertaining to 17, um, I think we should reschedule a meeting, have a meeting with the, uh, the residents from 17, Rocker Run, to bring them up to date what's going on. And, um, I think that would be appropriate also.
So, adjacent property owners within the legally required distances were all notified, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It was posted and the notifications went out. We continued it, so therefore automatically rolls over to the next public hearing, the next meeting, excuse me.
Okay. I, I guess I, um, I understand what you're saying, Marshall. Legally, um, everything that has required to be done as far as notifications has, has been done. And again, um, this is a rezoning request, and so the use of the property, while there is a large range of uses that are acceptable or allowed by right within the requested zoning, the actual use is not part of the application. Although, may tell us that's not, um, you know, not what we are, we rely on staff to tell us if this fits within, within the land use plan. Staff tells us it does, so, um, you know, I'm not sure there's any, um, that there's really no grounds for scheduling a public meeting, and there's no requirement for that. And if staff has told us that all legal, uh, uh, requirements have been satisfied.
Let me just comment again. Uh, my reasons for bringing, uh, Rocker Run, Highway 17, because the property that, that the owner has purchased, uh, you have two gigantic holes, and the, and the community need to know what are they planning in terms of safety? Because we still have a lot of children who live in Rocker Run, and we don't want them to be roaming around, you know, when they get, when they get a lot of rain, and the whole earth and get full of water. Uh, we just want to be on the safe side. What are, what are the plans for that safety-wise?
Understand, and so from, from our point of view as Planning and Zoning Board, we have to rely on, you know, once the rezoning is approved or disproved, let's, let's just assume for a second that it's ultimately approved by the Board of Alderman, that the site plan has then go before department review? And that's where safety, police, fire, everybody, all of the city departments reviews that and makes suggestions and recommendations as a part of that department review for that site plan. You know, those items are simply not in our purview, and I would suggest that if residents are concerned, that those concerns be directed to Development Services and to staff.
That's what I was hoping, that if you could have a meeting with those particular residents who affected by the changes, so they will know what they're going to do in terms of safety.
Understood, so that's not something we can require as a part of Planning and Zoning Board, but it is something that the residents can request from either the developer or the owner of the property. But it's not something that we can require, our stipulation that we can put on a rezoning request, at least to my knowledge.
No, and just to comment on that, the owner is going to be placing a fence around the retention pond area if that is a concern.
Yeah, and again, that's not part of our purview. That would be part of the departmental site pan, site plan review that's required before building permit can be, um, purchased for the property. And, you know, that's where a city, all the city departments review all of that safety, access from 17, and, you know, all of those things are reviewed as a part of that process.
That is correct.
Is the site plan available at this time?
Not at this time. We're just looking at the rezoning request.
Right, and that site plan would not come back before us, um, because the type of site plan, the type of project, that, that's not required to come back before us, but it does go department review. Correct, that's right. Anything else, Marshall? So it'd be my suggestion that those questions be directed, perhaps Development Services or the Inspection Department can help answer some of those questions.
Well, let me just mention this also. Now, we have some representatives from Rocker Run. Are we going to allow them to time to?
Absolutely, we're going to have, I'm going to open the, this item for public comment as soon as we have finished our board discussion.
Two items of note. Um, the only things that we can hold their feet to the fire for is what's listed in the ordinance.
Correct.
And, second of all, this is only a recommendation that goes to the Board of Alderman.
Correct, thank you, Morgan.
The Board of Alderman have the final say of the rezoning, just points.
So the reason it did not go to the Board of Alderman after our last meeting is because we voted to table it to allow staff, we gave staff a specific request for additional information, and we tabled it to allow staff to do that. Staff's done that. We've got that information with us tonight, so, um, it would be my hope tonight that we can render some sort of recommendation to the Board of Alderman, whether it be we recommend approve rezoning or we recommend disprove a rezoning. But either way, at this point, staff has done the legwork and got the information for us, so we, I would hope we would be able to render some sort of recommendation to the Board of Alderman. Okay, any other board comment, board discussion? And you'll have another chance to talk if you, about it. We'll bring it back to our, for board discussion after we have our public comment. But don't let that hinder you if you've got something to say. By all means, say it. Okay, so, hearing none, at this time, I'll open this item for public comment. So, what I'd ask is, first, um, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application, please step to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and then we'll hear what you have to say.
Good evening. My name is John Thomas. I'm with Thomas Engineering. I represent applicant. The applicant is here tonight. My office is at 1316B Commerce Drive here in Dever. Didn't realize we won't reopen the public hearing, but I think that's appropriate to do that, and I think we would probably welcome comments as we, as we move through this. We thought we were just going to be dealing with the question posed in the, uh, in your motion last week. Was there an agreement in place? Uh, I'll review the stuff that, um, Morgan presented. We've done our own research and we cannot find anything, you know, an agreement of sort. So we'd like to move forward, you know, with the rezoning. I want to point out just a couple of things if I could walk over to the, the overhead.
Sure.
Here's our piece of property right here that we were requesting rezoning on. There's some question about this gap here, and, um, at the time, we thought it was a map in area, and we still believe it's a map in area. We think that the C-3 on Mr. Beatty's property comes all the way over to our property line. Once and for all of that would be in your packet. It's hard to see, but in this area right here is where our property is. If you look very close, it appears that that line is coming further to the property line. It's hard to see, but this is the map they'll use at the time of the ETJ. So we feel like that the property line was for the boundary of the zoning. I don't know why it didn't, it didn't come back. Also, I want to point out that, um... I'll try to, again, our property is here that we're asking for the rezoning on. I have to also name this property back here behind it. This is a very cut-up, difficult piece of property. If you look a bit on it, it's like a bottleneck in there. I will say that on this line here, on the western side, there's a little branch that runs up in here, and there's some significant weapons that surround that all the way up back into here. This over here is actually another stream, and it is classified as what's considered a blue light stream, so we got to stay fit toward the west end. It's more heavily above it along here on this side with the weapons that we don't, we're not going to get into. We're going to be in the center of this property right here. I'm glad to answer any questions, and a lot of the board members can refer to.
Certainly.
How size of this office building is going to be?
How large?
The office build that you plan on putting on the property? How large, yeah, how large is this?
That's building been working, uh, I think we're looking between eight and 10,000 square foot of building. Uh, I know they, they had their own tech working on size of the building, and we're just trying to put a plant in place to them, and they're trying to work through this, but we don't have an architectural building.
Now, would it be a multi-story building?
Uh, right now, it's single story.
And how many parking spaces are, are proposing roughly?
I'm not sure. Whatever the city company requires.
Depending on the square footage, it'll vary. Uh, the minimum anyway.
I, I, I can share with you one of our sketch plans, if you're interested in seeing it, but it's not really appropriate to do that this time.
Okay.
But I'm going to be right there. It's just a first concept, so you want to do more than that.
Well, I, I worry that would, uh, uh, bring more questions that, that are not necessarily related to the application.
The other part of that is, you know, and you pointed this, that out, this gentleman here, this is a rezoning, and anything that can go in that zone, other than what we're proposing, can go in there if it's sold to property to somebody else that can look at all the categories they can put in that zone, and they'd be able to put that type of, of business or whatever in there.
And that's where we rely on inspections and Development Services during the departmental review process.
If I may, can I ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Uh, the two gigantic holes that's out there, what do you, uh, are you going to put a gate around the two holes or even split them?
The holes are on, on the left and the right. There are some, some smaller holes, you know, what railway was made to there on one side of it. Those could be reglating, railroads could be reglating. They don't want to be a lot of work done and grading and I expect this.
Right.
But on the, on the left and the right, down in the weapons, we don't, we can't go down in there. We don't intend to. The front is a natural block there. I mean, even C-3 on the, on the east side of this, all that stayed wooden there. It all stayed wooden on the west side of Mr. Beatty's property. The back, um, I don't know if you've been on the front, but the back is, is, is in a real mess. It's real junky back there, um, and there's, I'm not sure what's going to happen sometime since I've been back there, uh, but some of that will be cleaned up, but it's not going to be part of the project that we're doing up there on the front, front piece.
On, on, on the areas that you allow, do you plan on doing any field? I mean, what's the elevation? I'm sure it's going to change some, but how much field and how much elevation are you looking to put in there?
You know, the front part of the property is up pretty high.
Okay.
A little of it.
Just do that a little bit off.
We probably want to cut that down a little bit. Um, I don't anticipate raising the property at all. And, um, you know, we've got a control stormwater too, so right now we anticipate putting some sort of stormwater mitigation structure or a small pond or something in there to slow the water down. And it may be that square footage of what we're doing in there with the parking and it may kick us into a space stormwater thing, but we have to treat the stormwater as well.
Your pond that you speak of, are you looking for it to be forward, front?
It'll be, it'll be in very back probably. The front, we would build in the parking, go to the right around. The back portion of the property is problematic as far as getting set system in, because there's no city sewer out there. There is one site on the residential part behind our property that is available to put in if somebody wants to build a residential house on a piece that they still own, and they're not going to develop by now. So we're having to squeeze in the septic system on the front up there by the highway on some property that the source of good, we're doing that.
Would the grave be to, toward the highway or away from the highway? Toward the real property or toward the?
Well, the water will, the, the drains on, on the facility will be directed to the back where the stormwater pond is. Coming out of the stormwater pond with the overflow, it'll go in probably the, the drain is on the east side, because that's where the stream is most people.
Thank you, John. Okay, anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, hearing none, at this time, we'll ask anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of the application. Please do the same. Come forward and clearly state your name and address for the record.
My name is Constance Simmons. I'm a resident at 40, 4420 Highway 17 South, a couple blocks from the, uh, property listed in question. And the question I have is regarding the, the, um, notice for the public hearing. On January the 8th, I was here for two hours, because originally the sign had said it was going to, was going to be here, and then I think it was changed to First Street. And the sign, uh, that's up there right now is saying January the 8th, 2019 at 5:30. So I, uh, my question is that how was the residents in the area notified that the hearing would be tonight? I called your office today. That's how I, how I found out, but I'm saying that this, this, this notice is, is in front of the property?
Right.
So could you?
The, the original notice was made for the January meeting that we held for, for First Street. It was continued, so therefore when something is continued, it automatically rolls over to the very next meeting.
So how, I guess my question is that how would the residents know that it was continued when the sign says public hearing, January the 8th, 2019 at 5:30? And the day is the February the 5th?
Why didn't they come to the first hearing?
Well, I was, when I was here for two, two, two hours, because, uh, because the first sign had, if no mistake, I went and read the sign, and I was here for two hours, and after the meeting, I spoke with the mayor and asked him what happened about the hearing, and he said, well, it was on First Street.
That's correct. Can I see that photo if you don't mind?
Right, that, I guess the, the confusion there is that there was also a Board of Alderman meeting that night, which is why our meeting was at First Street.
Yeah, it says where.
That's a question. Does that say it's? But the, the sign was changed. Originally, I was supposed to know. How was I supposed to know that a meeting was held to, to, today?
When was the sign changed? Because it was, I submitted that.
She said it was denied.
Yes.
Because it legally automatically rolls over. When, when we had the continuance in January, it automatically rolls over to the next meeting.
But then how was the rest of it supposed to know?
Well, we're not legally obligated to continually update it every single time it's continued.
But if it's a public hearing, you would think the residents in the area would at least, uh, be aware that a meeting was taking place tonight.
I'm just saying what the statutes say.
Let me just clarify. Does that, um, notice you have say was going to be here?
No, this is what?
No, it just states public hearing, date, I believe, date and time.
Right. That was the one that we held January the 8th, 303 First Street, and that's what it was.
Was the, uh, the agenda posted on the door downstairs like it normally is?
Uh-huh, and it's posted on the door at our office too. Just in case. And it's posted on the website. But the way that the statutes read is that once we do the first notice, that's our legal requirement once it's continued, so it will roll over, and if you were to continue it tonight, it would be till the next March meeting.
And the sign wouldn't change?
No, and the sign wouldn't change, and the notices wouldn't change because we already did our legal obligation.
So once we, just for clarity's sake, once our board makes a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, the sign is also not updated for that public meeting, or is it?
No, it will be.
Because that's a different board.
Because it's a different board, it's a different meeting. The notice will go in the newspaper. New, um, a new sign will be posted that says Board of Alderman meeting, the time, date, the location, and the notices will go out as well.
Okay.
So I understand, I understand what you're saying, but that was what the general statutes require. We did the minimum requirements.
Ma'am, while you're here, do you have anything material to say about the reapplication of the zoning?
Well, I was just especially concerned because, um, when I was in German, came back there, uh, the two, between two residents, there's a business between my house and my neighbors, there's a Mike's Tire, so I was quite natural. As, uh, being in community, I want to know if, uh, uh, another structure is put in this community, I would want to at least be aware of it. That's why I had attended the meeting, because I was interested in knowing what was going to happen to the property.
Certainly. Okay, thank you, Ms. Simmons. Anyone else like to speak in opposition of the application?
Good evening. Heron Beatty, 407 Rocky Run Road, New Bern, North Carolina. I am not in, necessarily in opposition to what is proposed. What I am wanting to know at this point is how can we retain a residential community as commercialism spreads throughout our community? I want to know with whom am I to speak, or this community is to speak? To find out how we can put some safeguards up as to how commercialism starts to spread throughout the community. I have a hesitation for not just being gung ho, because I have been working with city programs and things for quite a while, and I understand how it can just run away, and people in that area will be wiped out, their history's gone, which is what my cousin was just sharing with you about stuck between two businesses. We grew up there. How can we secure that commercialism, people with wealth, and other large businesses just come and wipe us out? We want to know if there are matters that we need to move before the Board of Alderman's so that we can set some, um, parameters with how it spreads back north into our community, and then back, let's see, that would be east toward New Bern. Because once you dip into that area, you put that piece of property that's now residential, abutting, commercial. In front of that is commercial. The cancer grows from that. We need to find a means to secure that we will not be destroyed. We are worthy, as Don Black said, to look at the history of our community and save us just as you did the Gant community or some other community. We need to know these things. As soon as possible, you can let some of us know. The question that she also had, I respect her question. I don't respect the response from the board, from the members up here, they, well, how you handle that. Ms. Simmons, I tell you, we got to look out for ourselves. We are not a vicious community. We love people, and we just want to keep our community growing. The proper answer to that could have been handled more humbly. I agree. The tone was right, right. I'm defending my family here still. Also, guys, that's all I want you to know, is we're more concerned with the future development and how we can protect our community from the onslaught of commercialism. That's my say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Okay, anyone else like to speak in opposition of the application? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public comment. Okay, seeing none at this time, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for additional discussion before our request of motion. Do we have any other discussion from our board members?
I'm just curious, isn't seventeen a commercial corridor essentially in New Bern? By land standards?
There is an overlay and it's a major highway, so.
So it's, so I guess from, strictly from a zoning and a land development point of view, it is not uncommon, in fact, it's quite regular for commercial zoning to abut residential zoning. Uh, that doesn't necessarily make anybody feel better, but it is a common occurrence. And, you know, as a part of the ETJ and the, and the agreements that were set forth, Highway seventeen and the quarter and the overlay, that allows for, uh, commercial land uses, uh, you know, that abut those residential uses in that area. And staff tells us that it is, um, uh, you know, congruent with the, uh, land use plan.
And that commercial overlay in no way approaches Rocky Run Road or anything?
I, I.
I don't believe it does.
Good question, but I, I don't know the answer to that, don't. But, you know, that's certainly something that, you know, that's available online, that, that can be viewed.
All right, any other discussion?
I think another, but it just came in.
Well, I, I've closed the public comment now, unfortunately, uh, we, we've started this item and, um, opened public comment, received a comment, and now we can close the public comment. So I'm not going to make a habit of reopening the public comment if, can avoid doing that.
Did I hear a motion to close the public comment, I'm sorry. Was there a motion to close the public?
No.
Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
At this point, I would like to introduce a motion to close the public hearing.
Hmm, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're back to board discussion again, is there any further discussion from the board?
The, the current zoning of this parcel is R twenty, that's residential.
Correct.
And the two abutting properties?
Well, in which direction?
Well, well, north and south on both sides.
Put a map up there?
Because I'm trying to.
I think east and west, probably what you're thinking.
Yeah, so those are C three currently.
Can you see that okay?
Right, C three, what's the, what's the?
C three, C three, C three, all through here.
Okay, okay, C three.
There's just this anomaly here that we think is a mapping error.
Okay.
You got to have, have to, have to represent the woodland where the house and the business was, uh, put to commercial, was the ETJ first had. And woodland was a separate piece of property owned by the family, and that's why you see that petition off like that. That was owned by Clara Clark, Beatty Carter, and Billy Oliver Beatty Senior, and that's why you see that like that.
Okay.
It's personal property.
Thank you, Heron, we, we've closed our public comment, I, I appreciate it. So let's see, your question was what are, so there's our map, so east and west is C three and behind the property, or north in this case, is R twenty.
And I would just like to remind the board that that rear part of the property was actually the road bit for railroad, so historically it's been not residential originally.
Right, at least within the right of way of the railroad.
Okay, any other public comment? Or board discuss, or excuse me, any other board discussion?
Where did the train, the railroad, right of way go through?
Well.
That, that line up?
Yeah, the line that you see that essentially bisects this particular parcel that runs from east to west, that's, uh, that's where the railroad maybe once was.
Roughly about two hundred feet, give or take.
Either, yeah.
Off of the, the highway line, parallel more.
What are the houses that are there now, were they there when the railroad was there, is anybody there?
I, I, yeah, I don't know. The typical right of way of the railroad, I believe, is, um, a hundred feet, so that's fifty's feet either side of the tracks. That's pretty typical.
Okay, any other board discussion? Okay, hearing none at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
At this point, I would like to introduce a motion to approve the zoning as a recommendation to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval, do we have a second?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Morgan, why don't we do a roll call on this one?
Absolutely. Everyone understands the motion on the floor? Raymond Layton?
Yes.
Sonny Lozo?
Yes.
Don Black?
Yes.
Willie Newkirk Senior?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Jeff Nigga?
Yes.
Jerry Walker?
Yes.
Marshall Battler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So again, as Morgan said, all of the public notices will be posted again for the Board of Alderman meeting, or this item will go before them for official approval of the application. And likewise, uh, the notifications will be sent to adjacent property owners.
Yes.
Okay?
And notice in the paper.
Right. Okay, so that takes us to new business, the informal session for the New Bern Redevelopment Commission presented by staff has been pulled from the agenda.
Right.
Likewise, the approval of the redevelopment area boundary has been pulled and that we will, that will come before us in our March meeting, is that?
Yes, that is the plan.
Okay. So our next item is consideration of a major subdivision, general plan approval submitted by Warehouser in our company. And McKim Creed Incorporated has proposed two hundred and fifty acre, two lot major subdivision located to the north of Downey Drive and south of NC Highway forty-three, the property is further identified as a portion of Craven County Parcel ID eight dash two zero nine dash one three zero zero one, and is in ETJ. So I think we've got two little pieces of housekeeping we need to do here, one is we need to bring.
I'd like to do the motion to have Heron Beatty rejoin the board.
Thank you, so we have a motion.
I'll second that.
A second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're back, welcome back. Okay, next item, or the next little piece of business is, I'd like to request recus, recusal from this particular item as I have a conflict of interest.
I would like to introduce a motion to allow our chairman to recuse himself from this, uh, part of the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right. You're up, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm told that I get ten percent of my, of my salary.
It's hard trouble.
Okay, so, uh, do we have a staff review for this?
Yes, so on December twenty-eighth, the city's departmental subdivision review committee reviewed the proposed general plan for Craven thirty west, lot four, and determined the plan substantially meets the requirements for approval, staff recommends the plan in the zoning board approve the proposed general plan as presented.
Okay, we have a board discussion, anybody want to say something about this? Anyone? Okay, we have a public comments, does anybody want to speak for this particular proposal? Ladies is getting easy. Okay, how about anybody speaking against this proposal? Okay. Enclosed public comment, does this get, any, any more, anybody else on the board decided they want to say something now? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept or reject this, either way. Anyone?
I would make a motion that we consider the, uh, major subdivision general plan approval submitted by Warehouser, uh, in our company, McKim and Creed proposed two hundred and fifty plus and minus acre and a two lot major subdivision located to the north of Downey Drive, Downey Drive as further described in Part C of the regular reading agenda, and I guess we need to, is this a recommendation for approval?
This is just recommendation.
No, you all approved general plans.
We're approving general plans.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, that was changed about three years ago, four years ago.
Okay, and that we would approve the general plan as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the proposal's been passed. We've, we've approved the parcel.
All right, that was easy enough.
Now I entertain our motion to bring back Raymond, fast.
It's better to be there.
Yeah.
I would like to propose that our chairman, Raymond Layton, rejoin the board at this meeting.
And I'll second that whole argument. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, so our next item in new business is a final subdivision plan approval request from Thomas Engineering and Stars and Stripes Ford FLC. For Tyler Home on the Lake, formerly known as Lake Tyler, phases seven, eight, eleven, and twelve. This is a proposed one hundred and five lot residential plan unit development. This section of the multi-phase development is located on a combined fifteen point three two acre, uh, in R ten residential district. Site is located to the northwest of Washington Post Road and on the south side of Gracie Farm Road, and it is in Ward five.
And? Staff has reviewed the proposed final subdivision plan and finds that all the technical legal requirements for some final subdivision plan has been approved. Therefore, final subdivision plan for approval of Tyler Home on the Lake is recommended as presented.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. Okay, so, um, any board discussion on this particular item? So just a, um, piece of information, so what is before us tonight is the final plan approval. So we are, our board is the, uh, the final decision on that. And should we approve, should we elect to approve the final subdivision plan? That would, at that point authorize the developer and the owner to begin selling lots. Once, uh, once recordation is completed. Okay, any board discussion? Morgan, you want to explain to our board members our performance bond that we have before us?
Right, I just gave that to you all for your information, at first we did, we knew it was in transit, we didn't have it, we received it today. That's why that contingency I mentioned previously is gone. They have satisfied all of the necessary requirements for a performance bond, which you have in front of you, so legal counsel has reviewed it, we're content with it.
Excellent. Okay, uh, any more discussion before I entertain a motion? Okay.
What, what, what was the?
Uh, any more board discussion before I entertain a, uh, motion? Okay, uh, hearing none, at this time I'll entertain a, uh, motion for this particular item.
At this point, I would like to introduce a motion to approve, uh, the plot as described of the Tyler Home on the Lake, or formerly Lake Tyler, proposal before us, that includes one hundred and five residential plan unit development on approximately fifteen dot three two acres, and the site is located at Washington Post Road and south of Gracie Farm Road.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, so I believe that finishes our new business.
There is one that got skipped over, if you look at the agenda, there is.
Sure enough, I apologize.
We can't forget the.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you, Morgan.
You're welcome.
So we're going to circle back around to item four D, and this is a consideration of a major subdivision general plan approval submitted by Robert Childs Engineering. It is a proposed twelve point four four acre, three lot major subdivision located west and east of Newman Road and to the south of, south of Wellens Boulevard. The property is further identified as Craven County Parcel IDs eight dash two one two dash eight zero one zero, eight two one two zero seven six, and eight two one two eight zero zero nine, and it is located in Ward six.
And on December fourteenth, twenty eighteen, the city's departmental subdivision review committee reviewed the proposed general plan for Robert Childs Engineering, also known as Wellens Road, and determined the plan substantially meets the requirements for approval, staff recommends the plan in the zoning board approve the proposed general plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. Any, uh, board discussion on this? Morgan, I don't think we have to have a public comment period for this one, do we?
You have to technically, yes, although there's nobody here.
Okay, well, let's do that, why don't we, uh, if there's no more board discussion, we'll open up our public comment. Okay, uh, anyone would like to speak in favor of the application, please step to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition of the application? Please step forward and clearly state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, this time I'll, uh, close the public comment and bring it back to the, uh, board for discussion. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to, um, approve the subdivision plan as proposed, which is the twelve lot four four acres submitted by Robert Childs Engineering. It's a three lot major subdivision located to the west and east of Newman Road and to south Wellens Boulevard. And the property is further identified as Craven County Parcel IDs eight dash two one two dash eight zero one zero, eight dash two one two dash zero seven six, and eight dash two one two dash eight zero zero nine, all within Ward six.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, the subdivision review is approved. Okay, all right, now that gets us to the end of the business.
At this point, I would like to introduce a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.